...years, and I also understand that forty percent of that needs to be spent by December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two, and that you should be working on thirteen hundred and seventy-five locations. So I'd like to have an update on that, on what you've done, exactly where these locations are, and will these services, the forty percent that is required to be done, will that happen?
Absolutely, yeah. And can I help to share my screen by chance, or is that not possible?
That would be possible.
Okay. I do have a visual deck I can shoot over to you guys afterwards if you'd like, but we have our twenty-five-three services in other parts of Blackwater County. And we actually are already covering the majority of our cap obligations within the city of Healy in terms of twenty-five-three service, which is crew water, the cap obligations. But one of the things that we're planning on doing going into next year is actually deploying fiber, fiber optics, within the establishments of Healy and also outside of Healy. But that should allow us to do fiber at the home and also bring fiber to a lot of businesses, which I think would be...
Can you hear me? Can you turn the volume up a little bit?
Are you guys able to...
Is it getting better now?
Well, and I think, you know, is there a master volume? That master volume, would that make a difference?
I don't... That's what that guy came in with the other day and said that, of course. And that's what he told us. If they're like, if we can't hear them, that's on their end.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, I can speak for a couple of minutes if, and then maybe, you know, he can try to find maybe something else on his end, and you're okay with that. Can you hear me?
Go ahead. JoJo, this is Jim, Councilman Alworth.
Yes, sir.
There are thirteen hundred and seventy-five residents. How many of you have gotten the service already out of thirteen hundred and seventy-five? That part I missed completely.
Uh, no, we'll get that for you with it. If you look at the whole map, and I don't want you to look through the whole map of cap, the majority of that money is actually out in county as far as the majority of that. However, there is some right there in Healy. Now with that, as you know, it has to be twenty-five-three. And so we just launched the rate plan. Let me see. We have that individual that we're going to send you. We just launched the rate plan in this year for the twenty-five-three, which was done in July or August for that. So we can start giving you up to date, because we've never had the twenty-five-three, and that we must have in order to have our cap obligations covered. The rest of those will be done with the Healy Phase Two project. That project is already in permitting and has been. I don't see that project in and out of permitting as much as I would like to say this all, which is what I was shooting for. I really don't think, everything is kind of bothering that right now with a lot of the projects. So I don't see it coming out of permitting after the first of the year. That will be a fiber to the permitment of business and for some of the very close residentialous, as close back behind like the library and such. The library will also go on fiber as well as the grocery buildings and all of the surrounding buildings. That will go all the way down Main Street. We have already signed a master license agreement with NDOT, which we're going to start putting in the fiber outlets and the conduits that's been down that intersection. We've seen all of the construction going on down the conduits, down ninety-three and six. Now we're actually to the point of being able to sign what's called a master, no, 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 a master location agreement. And that is going to be the conduit and such that's going to be going down Main Street that we are also going to partner on. And so that, like I said, that is in progress, and the rest of those cap obligations will be done when we have that project completed. So let me ask, what's happening in the Baker, Lund, McGill, Ruth area as far as, you know, the rural deployments, what's going on? Well, we're hoping to get those in the bid grant, quite frankly. But I guess the demand, according to the state recommendations, I guess the demand is too great, so we all get it. Now, we have already networked design, everything from Lund, Preston, Ruth, Baker, as well as the McCaves, the Observatory. And so I know we are going to be working with the state, the state, with their one hundred million. We are going to be working with them. They're going to be putting down the RAP. So we've already spoken with a state consultant. His name is Joe Fardoso. And he said, hold on to those that we have already designed, all of the areas we just mentioned. Already designed and ready to go. They just weren't able to fill in this bid grant. So we're going to work with the state and build that direction, and we can get a couple more of those completed with full connectivity. May I also ask for you to just give a little bit more of an explanation of what's going on on Altman and Great Basin? Well, we really aren't, that's going to be an NDOT project. That's NDOT's improvement plan. But because of SB fifty-three that got enacted back in two thousand and seventeen, we were able, as a service provider, to actually use conduit. And so when NDOT has actually, in that project that we've seen going on, and what he's been doing, conduit was actually put alongside both sides of ninety-three, all the way down to six and some on six. And so we signed a master license agreement. So now we will be putting in fiber optics into those conduits that have already been put in and will be tying into their walls.
Joe, this is Jim. Isn't it possible to get a printed timeline, you know, just like a construction in progress? Where are you at, where you're at, what your goal is? So we don't got to keep bringing new folks back to the city council to see where it is, and you know?
Jim, I would be happy to do that. And I will offer to y'all the same as what I've offered for the county to do a quarterly update report for in person. Be happy to.
Okay, then, you're sort of being selfish here. How are the plans coming for the city and all of our stuff, the wastewater treatment plant, the fire station, the landfill? You know, all this other stuff that Councilwoman Jerry Lynn's talking about, dealing with the whole community, but to work me out with the city's goals and stuff we want to get, you know, rocking and rolling on it?
Are you talking about the proposal for the city?
Yeah, correct, because it's all tied together, the broadband, you know, we're going to, the whole project whole, the one twenty-six million dollars brings this into it too, getting it to town here, and we pay for your services afterwards.
Well, no, I think part of your proposal is actually going to be centered there. I think that can be done, part of that can already be done. That is not going to be, that is not going to be individually dependent on this stuff. It's not. Do you want me to have Wilson call you, or do you want to get on a phone call with all of us?
So you don't have an update for the city project, and we have to get old Wilson?
I do not have an update on that proposal. I know I've gotten moved in that. I do apologize. I should have got an update before you having an open proposal.
No problem.
I'm under the impression that there's already been contact on the proposal. No?
Well, it may be, you know, but are we seeing, I mean, I'm looking at the, Jennifer, are we seeing a timeline with them?
They are waiting for this item being placed on the agenda as far as review and approval of the proposal. Wilson has been in close contact with me, and we have Genuvers' most updated proposal.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, JoJo.
Yeah, no, I apologize. They just wanted us to report on the cap and the updates, so I apologize about that.
No problem. Thank you.
That's all I have. I want to thank you for the work that's happening, particularly for the things that have happened and that will happen, and also looking at the upgrades and service to the schools and so forth, which is of special interest. I just know that this is just very important, and I just want to make sure that things are going on in a timely function and wondering how that money is actually being spent. Oh, no, ma'am, that is absolutely fine. You don't have to call me anytime. Like I said, we have to do quarterly reports there. That is absolutely not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We move on to item four, Councilmember, City Treasurer, discussion for possible action. Approve Budget Committee's recommendation of the American Rescue Plan expenditures to include models or exclude the following. Premium pay to be determined through fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two and start effective the first payroll of October two thousand and twenty-one for all current city employees as essential workers during COVID-nineteen pandemic. Amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And ZO auto pulse systems for fire department, that costs, let's see, we did the quote here for sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents. Treasurer.
Okay, the premium pay part, I've been working in conjunction with, getting some guidance from our auditors. The back pay wasn't, it's their understanding, it's not able at this time with this money go back beyond March of two thousand and twenty-one. But there is the option to do some premium pay. We talked about percentages. But I guess my opinion is, I feel like fair to come in and just get flat enough to every employee equal, so it's not based off a group that's paid more. And what I recommended on this was basically starting the first pay period in October to give each person two hundred dollars premium pay out of this funding through the end of the fiscal year.
That's two hundred dollars per pay period?
Per paycheck, yes, per person. And then on the ZO system, of course, anything dealing with the EMS is pretty much covered under this act from the way I understand it, and there was a request from the fire department. And I think Ed, you would talk to him about this ZO system.
Yeah, I did. Actually, they gave me a kind of, what do I call it, a demonstration of how this thing worked. At that time, actually, I was kind of hoping that our chief could go with her too, and I discussed it with him about two, because he did tell me why I was up there getting this demonstration. That thing is pretty incredible. I mean, it's absolutely, if I ever need CPR, I hope that fire, the ambulance has got that on it. But what I thought we needed, not additional, and I would have hoped that the committee would look at one more, because the city, and Pat, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have two ambulances up there and one that's kind of on loan, so we have a total of three. One time in the last year, year and a half, they had all three ambulances out there on cardiac issues. You know, I'd hate to be the one person that didn't have one in that ambulance. Now, we all, I don't think there's the lower ambulance that fell for the county, I guess. All they're prepared with is the city, so I'd like the budget committee to look at this and have them one for all three of the ambulances, because it could be any given moment, two to be on a little wreck, and we could have cardiac incidents here in town or in McGill or where I live, but in our jurisdiction there, and guess what? We've got chest compression by hand, and it's, we're not grabbing, I think this is really valuable. The other question, Pat, the light band that you guys showed me, those are, one time you saw, right?
I'm in trouble, Jerry. The light band, did Patrick, you have to put that thing on your patient, you can use that one?
Yeah, this, the band on, then they get replaced by the...
But you only ordered two in a spare for package, and if you have one incident, you can point that reason. Is that enough to have?
Well, I mean, like I said, we could always use more, because, I mean, I have some to put in just our regular budget. So, I mean, I don't know where we're at, I mean, where we're at exactly on some of this, so.
I'm going to talk about the budget.
More is always better, for sure.
And you can go back to another request. I mean, we got until December of two thousand and twenty-four. But my point is that you guys showed me, give me two scenarios where you had one time two, one time three cardiac patients.
I heard this three weeks ago, you know, we had our ambulance that had the auto pulse on it that was in a call in McGill. And at the same time, we had a drowning in Cape Lake with CPR in progress. And the ambulance that we fit on that call, you know, didn't have one, which, you know, made it get a guy back, so it's been good. But, I mean, there's just kind of having that, you know, that being in the thing. You're doing CPR on somebody, if you go to go down the stairs, you go to move them out of the thing, you got to stop, because you can't be doing compression. This machine sets up on them, it's in the thing, we're carrying them out, carrying them downstairs through a narrow hallway. It's continually doing quality CPR on them.
And it monitors them.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a no-brainer to go back to the budget committee and get a few more of these bandages.
We actually have a meeting scheduled for next week, so we, to get more items put on and have certain submitted summer requests.
Okay, that's all I have. I really think this is super important.
All done. Thank you, Councilman Spear. We have comments or questions?
A question to the treasurer. On the pay, I understand what you said, and I think you missed, you said incorrectly. For those making the most money, you're going to get more money. It's, if you use the percentage, anybody who makes more money on a percentage basis, they'll get more of this money. So I think your idea of a flat rate is better, you know, how you guys determine what's the best, you know? And anybody that would like to send, or wants to look at this, could challenge this decision that you're throwing out there. So it's very important the city council understands that. Oh, first of all, I should have stayed in this room. As a member of the Healy Fire Department, any comments I make or will be, will do my very best to be for the betterment of the city and the citizens. So in that declaration, whatever you want to call it, this includes members of the city fire department, so I will abstain on any part of that part right there, on that right there. So I don't know how, I expect you're going to come under a lot of heat, because some people aren't going to like the number you're drafting at. I don't know, of this hundred and seventy thousand, the mayor mentioned two hundred a paycheck, or four hundred dollars a month for forty-four employees.
Yes.
That's fifty. Wow.
Fifty-two to a hundred a year.
Okay, whatever it is, and I think she said two pay, two months.
It's nineteen more pay periods to the end of the pay period, if you start in October.
So the two months that have three pay periods, they'll get the two hundred then two?
Well, I think we only have one more, I suppose.
Well, one more, whatever, it keeps going on.
Two pay periods, but it was nineteen pay periods between the October to the end of June. And at two hundred, and right now we have pressed on four hundred. Of course, I would ask for your guidance on the part-time people, if you would like that geared down according to their percentage of work. We've got some that are half-time, we've got some that are three-quarter time.
So for the people out of the building, all the city employees are classified as essential workers. We can't lose one person in any position in the city, so that's why this money is being donated. They're essential workers, which are deemed by the federal government, and we can do this. But again, two hundred dollars, nineteen pay periods, whatever it is, comes to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So I don't know what the council wants to do on that, but again, the section in the fire department, since we can't break it out, abstain that part of everything else is good. As for the auto pulse, I agree a hundred percent. If you've done CPR for thirty miles, it wears you out. But there again, because of my past affiliation with the fire department, much as I support it, I will not be more than on that item.
Just for clarification, can I, I mean, we've talked percentage, we've talked just a flat amount. You're proposing two hundred dollars for an employee, no matter what they're making?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that it can't be readdressed. We have another half coming. And it's something to at least get it started and can be readdressed at another time.
I mean, when I, October to next June is eight months, probably nine months. I would hate to put our employees too in a position where they're used to getting it, and then they quit on us in July, because they go, well, I'm not getting that anymore. Do you have any thoughts on that?
No, because, and I'm sorry, that does...
Not a thing?
To me, it shouldn't be. Well, it happens, I couldn't tell you. It's something to give our employees some extra.
I agree with that.
It's not going to last forever. This money isn't going to last forever, and that's just the reality of it. And when it comes to the employees, they're going to do whatever they're going to do. Can we please everybody like Jim said? No. But at least it's something that, to me, I feel is better than nothing to give back to the employees.
So would this be close to reimbursing that per dollar of what they lost, really?
It's going to depend on who you work, because back then it was based off their salary, so it had.
But this is opposed, this is opposed to doing that, because we can't really justify this on anything that's ours.
Right now, what I'm going on, that we can't go back to that. So I would say most everybody, yes, we'll get back at least what they lost, if not more.
And some might not quite get back what they lost, would be a different...
I would say all of them, well.
Okay, I have a question. You know, the higher-paid people, they have, they took a bigger dip. You know, that's a lower, the lower-paid people benefit greatly. The higher-paid people are not going, simple math, they're not going to get as much, you know, what they probably lost. But all in all, like she said, the treasurer says, you know, and it's allowed, they're essential workers. It's sort of a reinforcement, we need you to come to work. We need you here. The community needs you. So please come to work, get your shots, do everything you can to keep the city functioning.
If I might comment, I understand where you're coming from, and so when we meet next week with the budget, I think it might help if, and I know you'll do this anyway, if you'll lay everything out, and then if we see that there are some people that are being shorted, hopefully.
They're not. I'm going to tell you right now, they're not.
So they, so... Everybody's going to be, at least be made whole. Some people are going to do better than being made whole.
So everyone will be made whole? Okay, because I was, I was understanding what you were saying.
Yes, I am. But you've got to remember, we can't tie this back to that. That's where you've got to be careful with this, because it has to be a premium based off of March two thousand and twenty-one forward.
And then if I could just add one more thing, I think it's pretty exciting that we have enough funds to really be able to equip our ambulances with all of that. So that's really exciting, because, you know, dealing with the city, so much brick and mortar, it's very nice to invest in human capital, and that's what this half employee does.
And we have all the costs coming, so.
Any other questions?
The last question I have is, when or who designates the end of the COVID-nineteen pandemic? If we go into the next allotment of money, we just keep rolling forward, so to come from Joe, does it's over with, or we just go till twenty-sixth?
I want to say, looking through that paperwork, that it did not depend on whether they had declared an emergency or not. It had only declared if our employees, our essential employees, how do we do with that? It didn't have anything to do with the declaration of emergency, I think is the point.
That's not...
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain motion on these two items, or just from the other side.
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Spear, or the second? Second from Councilman Mr. Parker. All in favor?
By may, the only silly disclosure I have to make, hey, pick out the fire department out of this number. I'm not going on that board for the auto pulse system.
Don't know that. Okay. I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote with another extension from Councilman Alworth, motion active. We move on to item five, Councilmember, City Treasurer, discussion for possible action. Requesting to City Treasurer to request proposals to retain a professional firm for advisement on specific American Rescue Plan expenditures and reporting. The council members that were at Leaguer Cities with me, you may recall that during that, during that presentation, that this was something that we could spend the ARPA funding on, and it was also a recommendation. It is a lot of money, and will be audited. Having that extra layer of advisement protection to help us get through these audits, I think is proven, and Treasurer.
I'm hoping, I'll support this. I will say that I've gotten hold of it, and verdict, while I got hold of our auditors, they, I think, have passed on it, they'll be doing the auditing plus the single audit. So I have put a filler out with an inverted, and I plan on putting some more out to try and get some idea if they have people available for this.
I totally think this is really necessary, because I interpret some of this stuff with that hot jumper, then some people in the same room. And I don't, I've read rings of paper on this, and so I, we do need some professional advice. I'm really hoping that the State Treasurer would come over and get thinking, he might give us some stuff. I think this is absolutely, has to happen, because it just will keep us high.
In full agreement, and I will say this, because Kennick and our auditors are from Utah, they said that their state actually hired somebody to give the different counties and cities guidance. But he said to ask through the cities, but it didn't sound like the Leaguer Cities here in Nevada told you guys that there wasn't the state level that they would hire for this.
Not currently.
That was my understanding.
So as I understand the process, should the council approve this, or the advertising, we'll bring proposals back for the council's approval?
I don't know. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, any other questions?
I was going to move to approve, but they pulled up. I'd just like to make a comment, too. I believe, maybe Ed and I can talk to the border group on this also, they could shed some light. But there are some entities throughout this country that just flat turn the money back. They don't want to deal with headaches, and they're scared of, I mean, like Ed said, this guy reads a lot of stuff. It's rings and rings of paper. You don't do it right, someone's going to come knocking on your door. I've probably caught some people sleeping at night, so I think that's a great idea.
You have a motion, then, Councilman Spear?
Yes, I have a motion.
Motion, we have a second. All second, second from Councilman Alworth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fair to the full orders. With that, on item six, Councilmember, City HR Director, HR Director, Treasurer, discussion for possible actions, approval of building official recruitment effort statement on City Council's August thirty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, acceptance of the Walker designation.
Okay, I would like to request this time after what we went through last recruitment period, and we ended up hiring a lead to train up. I would like to change the advertisement to kind of feel like we're doing the firefighter that can fill in with the training, to kind of change the way I advertise this. The last time it was pretty much we were asking for, you know, try to qualify and build an official, so.
Sort of like, I totally agree with that.
Would we be advertising the same places we did the last time? There was a school or something?
Yeah, there was, well, I think it's called the ICC.
The ICC, yeah.
You can go through and run, help you with that last time, get them up there, and that seems to be our best.
And we'll have it nicer locally.
Yeah, we do locally, we do through the state and one office.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Carson. Square second?
Sure.
Second from Councilman Spengler, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven, Councilmember, City Attorney, discussion for possible action. Directing the City Attorney to draft and coordinate amendment, chapter one, title three, of Title. Amending chapters one and three of Title IV, Public Health and Safety of the City Code of City.
This amendment will be to include additional notice requirements and to bring chapter three into chapter one. It's a little bit redundant between chapter one and three, so I'm essentially going to amend and bring this.
Any other questions from the council? With that, all in favor?
If you'll bring just Mr. Attorney, where we look at your red line and blue lines and all that.
I can do that. All right, thank you.
All in favor of motion?
So move.
Do I have a motion from Councilman Alworth? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fair to the full orders. Item nine, public comment. Please state your name to the record. We've got a few minutes.
Hello, Samantha Elliott, Boy and Girl Club. I just wanted to thank the council, the mayor, for joining us on Tuesday. We did a preliminary walkthrough of the Murray Street School. We are in contract with some contractors to get a price back for that building. Our goal is to retrofit that building and open it with a possible capacity.